Good morning, everyone. Good morning to our viewing public. Good morning to the members in the gallery. Today is Wednesday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, and the House Standing Committee on Judicial Governmental Operations and the House Standing Committee on Public Utilities, Transportation and Communications now cause this meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to recognize our support staff, our legal counsel, Joe Callahan, our legal assistant, Cam Sir Nicholas, our legal assistant, Nick Rabulaman, and our IT specialist manager extraordinaire, Mr. Jonathan. At this time, I'd like to recognize our legal assistant, Cam, to please call the role on the JGO committee.
Representative John Paul P. Sablon.
Present.
Representative Edwin K. Probst.
Present.
Representative Malcolm J. Omar.
Present.
Representative Manny Gregory T. Castro. Representative Vicente C. Camacho. Representative Blas Jonathan B. J. T. Attell. Representative Vincent R. S. Aldon. Representative Joel C. Camacho. Representative Marissa R. Flores.
Present.
Madam Chair, six members are present with three members absent.
Thank you, Cam, and for the record, Representative BJ Attell and Representative Vicente S. Aldon have been excused for this meeting. At this time, I'd like to recognize Legal Assistant Nick Rabolaman to please call the role for the P U T C committee.
Representative John Paul P. Sablon.
Present.
Representative Edwin K. Probst.
Present.
Representative Julie A. Ogo. Representative Marissa R. Flores.
Present.
Representative Manny Gregory T. Castro.
Stiga.
Representative Diego Camacho.
Present.
Representative Blas Jonathan BJ T. Attell. Representative Angelo A. Camacho. Representative Vincent R. S. Aldon. Madam Chair, with five members present, and we have four who are absent.
Thank you, Nick. And again, for the record and on behalf of the chairman of the P U T C committee, Representative Vicente Aldon, Representative Angelo Camacho, Representative Julie Ogo are excused from this meeting. At this time on the agenda, I'd like to solicit a motion for the adoption of today's agenda. There has been a motion to adopt today's agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Today's agenda is now adopted. On item four, at this time, I'd like to invite the Special Assistant, Mr. Oscar Babalta, for his statement in regard to today's committee. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I just noticed, is this just JGO or P U T C as well?
It's a joint committee meeting, sir.
Okay, so I believe I didn't see the chair. Is he, is somebody, who's the vice chair?
The vice chair for which committee, sir?
P U T C.
It is Representative Angelo Camacho, and the chairman of the P U T C is Vicente Aldon. Both gentlemen have been excused from today's committee, and I am standing in as the JGO chairwoman.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you, sir.
As we move along, if I may also invite the administration's nominee up front, as I will be introducing him to your both committee and--
Sure, if there's no objection, sure. If there's no objection from the members. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to invite also Mr. or Dr. Jack Angelo to accompany SAA Oscar Babalta in the chamber. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I may, good morning, Madam Chair, and esteemed members of the Joint Committee on House JGO and Public Utility and Transportation Committee. First of all, I'd like to say, half a day, Dantiro. Buenos dias, Chairwoman Marissa R. Flores, as well as the absent chairman, Vince Aldon, and of course, the esteemed members of both committee. Thank you for the appearance this morning. For the record, my name is Oscar Babalta, the Special Assistant for Administration under the Office of the Governor. On behalf of Governor R. O. I. Palacios, Lieutenant Governor David M. Apetang, I thank you for the opportunity to be with here, to be with you here today. I'm pleased to introduce the administration's nominee, Dr. John Jack Angelo. I call him Dr. J., who has been renominated by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor to serve again on the Public Utility Commission, an important body, a component of our Commonwealth government which handles red settings for our only public utility in the Cinemai. You should have received Dr. Angelo's resume, and I will not drill mods, as you have probably all of you have went through the process of reading his background. Doctor-- Therefore, I-- On behalf of the administration, we have expressed, they have expressed their trust and confidence toward the nominee, Dr. Angelo. Ability to serve on the Public Utility Commission is fully prepared to answer any questions and present his plans and the other board commission members for the future of the Cinemai. With the extensive background, credentials, and dedication to serving Commonwealth, Dr. Angelo is an exceptionally qualified candidate. We kindly ask for your prime approval and your humble support to be brought forward to the full house on your next session. Since time is of the essence and there are critical matters that are not confronting CUC, together with CPUC, and as we all have been hearing in the papers daily regarding energy issues in the Commonwealth. So I beg of you and these honorable members of this chamber to expedite his approval, Madam Chair. And sincerely appreciate and doublona Jesus Masi from the administration, I now hereby formally introduce Dr. Angelo to your committee, respective joint committee. Jesus Masi, and buenos dias.
Thank you, SAA Mr. Babalta, for your opening remarks and your comments in support of the nominee renomination of Dr. Jack, John Jack Angelo. At this time in our agenda, we now open the floor to public comment. Please limit public comments to five minutes, and if there are any public comments and you have any written comments, please submit that to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Thank you, SAA, once again, and the public comment portion is now open.
Thank you, once again, to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is James Syrock. I'm here both as a citizen of the Commonwealth of Marion Islands, but also as the chairman of the Commonwealth Public Utility Commission. I know most of you, I should just indicate that, you know, I've lived on this island since nineteen seventy-nine. That's about forty-five years. When I first came to this island, Mr. Angelo was already here, and I met him. That's the time when we were both the Commonwealth and the Trust Territory Administration was operating. And one of my first jobs here, my first job here was with the Attorney General's Office as an Assistant Attorney General. And I became familiar with Mr. Dr. Angelo. He wasn't doctor at that time. But with Mr. Angelo, through my employment with the Attorney General's Office, and he worked with the Governor's Office for several years. I've known him personally. As a result, I mean, we're not, we're friends, but it's not like we hung out together. We just, we knew each other. So I'm not here as his best friend type of a situation. But I've known him, and I can indicate, at least from my acquaintance with him, that he has the interest of the Commonwealth and the people of the Commonwealth at heart. His character is good, and I think his reputation within the community is, has a high standard and a good quality. With respect to the Commonwealth Public Utility Commission, Mr. Angelo, Dr. Angelo, has served on the commission. We were both appointed at the same time and went on to the commission at the same time. Mr. Angelo, Dr. Angelo, I'm sorry.
Say Jack.
I've known him before he became a doctor. So in my mind, it's Mr. Angelo instead of Dr. Angelo. He is the currently, the, well, not currently anymore, but he was before his term expired, the Secretary and Treasurer of the Commission. And as the legislature knows, we're still operating sort of by bare bones. We don't have an office, we don't have a staff, we don't even have furniture. We have nothing except ourselves to do the work. And as a result, the Secretary Treasurer of the Commission has stepped in to, you know, do the minutes, help with other administrative matters of the commission. And Dr. Angelo has performed that responsibility with good diligence and has done everything I've asked him to do, even though sometimes not willingly in the sense of that I don't really like to be doing this, but he has done it. So in essence, he is a member, a commission member that is an important commission member to us. At the present time, I do not have a quorum. So it's important that this body acts on the appointment of Dr. Angelo and hopefully approves his nomination so we can get back to business. But I'm wholly, I'm here both as a citizen and as the chairman to support his nomination. And I highly, highly recommend his, the approval of his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Syrock. The public comments portion is still open. If there are any citizens or members of the community that would like to provide their public comment in regard to the renomination of Dr. John Jack Angelo. Being that there's none. On item six of our agenda is old business. There is no old business. Item seven, it is now, it's new business. Item A, Dr. John J. Jack, John Jack Angelo, renominated to serve as a member of the Public Utilities Commission representing the third senatorial district. Good morning, Dr. Jack.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
How are you feeling today?
I feel fine.
Great.
I want to welcome all the members of the committees and the staff. And I appreciate your having this session to expedite the hopeful nomination of my position on the commission.
Thank you so much for appearing again. As you know, you were here last year, and you're here again, so--
Deja vu.
At this time, I'd like to open the question. Oh, I'm so sorry. And this is why I have a vice chair, because sometimes the chairmen and women of the committee seem to forget that the nominee has the opportunity to state their reasons and, you know, opening statement. So, sir, I give you the floor to provide your opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You saw me not too long ago, and I made my statements. I think they were quite clear at the time of my willingness and wanting to help the Cinemai with this important commission. And I appreciated the governor and the SAA and the staff for nominating me and allowing me the chance. In that short period of time, from last July until April, when my commission term ended, I learned, I would say in that short period, quite a lot. From the standpoint of the commission, like the chairman mentioned, is in dire straits for support within its commission, mainly because of the financial situation. We have no control over the monies that are assessed to the commission. They sit with the Department of Finance. And I do appreciate the passing of the HB twenty-three ninety-seven, which would give the commission more financial independence. It is desperate that the commission has that. I'm speaking not only for myself and my duties, but other commissioners who will be there in the future, hiring of hearing officer, attorneys, consultants, et cetera, et cetera. And the delays of going through the Department of Finance are known. Our stipends from last year, it took approximately six months to have them processed, a hundred and fifty bucks. And some of them have not even received theirs yet. So I'm not going to criticize the Department of Finance. It's just the way it is. The commission needs that independence to be able to operate on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, because it's very critical, the CUC operations and the regulation of the CUC operations. They basically have not been regulated, I think, since nineteen, two thousand and sixteen because of no quorum and no active members. And we finally got a quorum back July of two thousand and twenty-three, but with all the restrictions of no money, et cetera, et cetera, and then two of the members being, having their terms expired, it went back into no quorum. Now we have the opportunity to build back, and I would hope the House would actually, besides myself, there's two other vacancies that they would somehow support the governor to take action, an opening on Tinian and another in Saipan. It's very critical. I'm not going to lecture or inform this committee, both committees, because I know you guys are up on the news. You follow the news. You have plenty of people calling you about the news in that Saipan, Cinemai is going through a very critical phase of businesses terminating, pulling out. And part of the reason is, you know, the management of the island and the critical financial needs that have to be met. Our commission is not, you know, in that bill that was processed, and I thank the PUC committee for approving it and giving it to the floor. It's just asking for this basic independence and having the commissioners be given a reasonable stipend. There's a lot of work in this particular commission. I'm not saying other commissions don't have hard work or a lot of work in front of them, but this particular commission has a lot of work. It's a matter of studying about the CUC. That's not the only utility, commission or utility entity. It's also DOCOMO and ITNE. So there's telecommunications, there's power. And I myself, I always delve into the information. I study the different parts of the operations. I'm not an expert in CUC matters and oil and processes. I know of them, quite, I would say, qualified to understand the basics. And I know that from my father, who was a contractor, you hire the plumbers to do the plumbing. He oversaw the whole operation, but we as a commission, we oversee and regulate the utilities. But we need outside consultants, hearing officers, and attorneys to make sure that both sides of the equation are treated fairly, both CUC, ITNE, and DOCOMO, and also the public, who has to pay fees and rates that are sometimes arbitrarily set. And that's why the commission steps in, not to bully the entities, but to present it to their own consultants. The other side have their consultants. They get together, if necessary, hearing officer hears both sides, and they come up with a fair amount for both the public and the entity, the utilities. So again, we're not at that point. And my nomination is a part of that puzzle. I'm not saying that you have to nominate me. I'm not saying that. Just the position. If I'm not nominated, the next person who sits here, hopefully they're nominated, and the two other vacancies, because it's critical. The headlines the other day in the paper said, "The Cinemai is collapsing." Why? This is a beautiful island. It's God-given tourism attractions of the beaches and sunshine and et cetera, et cetera. So I think we just need to tweak the system. And I've been here for forty-six years, and I think you know my record of tweaking the system. Sometimes I've been criticized for tweaking, but somebody has to do the tweaking. If not-- And plus, I follow the House members and the legislation they put forth, and I admire and I congratulate you people for stepping up, because you're criticized too for your decisions, both, you know, positive, and you're also negative. But we have to make these decisions, and I'm willing to make the decisions to make the CPUC a functioning, positive body. And I hope that you understand that I'm not trying to establish myself as a, you know, person of power. I just want to be a part of the system that creates a powerful Cinemai, that we survive. At my age now, my concern is, be frank, are the younger people. I'm on that so-called final glide path of life. And the commission provides me a final glide path. It's going to be kind of bumpy, but I can withstand it, and I enjoy working and taking on any challenges. It's been my life's work. I learned it from my parents. They were both hardworking, beautiful people. Rest in peace. And again, I thank you for your consideration. And any questions, please present them.
Thank you, Dr. John Jack Angelo. Can I call you Dr. Jack?
Just Dr. Jack.
Thank you.
Or you can call even Jack, it's fine.
Thank you, sir. At this time of the agenda, I'd like to open the floor to our members who are present for any questions, and also the presence of Representative Roman Beneventi, who is also just joining us here in the chamber. Thank you so much. Members, the floor is now open. Recognize Representative JP Sablon.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good morning, Dr. Jack.
Good morning.
Thank you again for accepting the nomination by our administration. We also, I also want to take this opportunity to thank the Honorable Governor R. O. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David Apetang for renominating you to serve in this board. My question to you, since you have served the time that you have served last year, did you guys discuss or have made any budget proposal? Because apparently, in order for this board to work, you guys need a budget to, you know, carry your missions. And I'm not too sure if there's any budget request. I know it's budget season. And if there is, that you have worked on on the time when you were serving on the board, what does that budget look like? What are the figures? And if you can expound more on that budget request, if there is. If there's not, I think it's important, since it's budget season, that we, that you kind of look at that issue if we confirm back to the board. Thank you.
Yes, Representative. This commission, even though we were bootstrapped-- This commission, even though we were bootstrapped by no finances, we worked basically with no support, office, et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to go into it too much, it's just a pain to operate that way. I think all of you know, if you didn't have your assistants and legal counsel, et cetera, et cetera, you'd be strapped too. But we went ahead and did our due diligence, we created a budget, and it was with the presence of the CUC, Chairman of their Board of Directors, and the Acting Executive Director. And we presented a budget, and after we presented it, they even mentioned that it was too low, because we incorporated ballpark figures, good estimates of the cost of hearing officers and, you know, support staff. And we only requested one support staff, you know, that would multitask, because the commissioners, myself, and especially our chairman, is very active in doing work. But a office, you know, a basic, you know, computer, a chair, a desk, there was furniture for the CUPC, and it was put in storage, but somebody looked into that, and apparently that storage facility now is empty, it has no more furniture. And I think the pieces are borrowed, but they're basically not to be found, so we have to start from scratch. So we put in just the basic for a table, chair, computer, hiring of a staff member, and the other mandatory people that are needed, the consultants, hearing officer. And the budget itself, again, like I say, was looked over by the CUC, because they pay assessment fees that make us self-sustaining, you know, as the law states, basically. So, and they were saying that it seems to be too low, and so we added some, but not that much, just to make sure that we could survive the year by year, you know, make adjustments, but also make sure that the Honorable House and Senate, Governor's Office, they be aware of the budget, once, you know, it comes to, you know, final stages. And the final stage would be that we need some money to back up this budget, and to see how we can adjust and see what the situation is. So we've done everything possible to create a working budget. And if the House would care to see that, there are records of this transaction, and if the Chair agrees, since I'm not a commissioner as of now, I can't make that decision, but the Chair, I think, would provide that budget that was presented and approved by the acting and commission at the time. And like I say, we're not asking for the moon, just the basics to operate the commission.
Thank you, Dr. Jack, for that response. Madam Chair, are you up for now?
Thank you, Representative Sablon. Anyone else? Floor is still open. Recognize Vice Chair Joel Macho.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Dr. Jack.
Good morning.
Again, also, thank you for accepting the nomination, and thanks, thanks to the administration for renominating you to continue to serve in the CPUC or the commission. I just have one question. Prior to your time or your expiration of your term in CPUC, when was the last, did you guys, or when was the last time that you guys had a rate adjustment for the FAC?
For, as a time I served?
Yes.
Well, we could not, you know, we were asking for the CUC to submit a petition, because that's how it works, they submit a petition for a rate increase. And that was requested, I would have the Chair reaffirm that process, because he's the one that mainly communicated with the CUC. And again, it would have been sort of like, without money, without a hearing officer, consultants, et cetera, et cetera. I wouldn't say it'd be a waste of time, but we did request, we wanted to see what they would be, you know, asking for. And then at that point, I would say that we would have done anything that we could to react to that petition. There is some money in the finance, not that much, it's difficult for us to get our hands on that money. So we would have probably waited for the assessments to come in, and we were banking on the fact that the HB bill, we submitted way back in December, after meeting with the governor and had his approval of the independence of the CPUC. Hopefully, it's going through that process, it's up in the Senate now, it's being held partly because of, we put a request in for some minimal amount of money for the commissioners on a monthly basis. And I know the Madam Chair has a bill that is asking for some of the commissions, others to lower, some are quite high, you know, the salary, but we're asking for a minimal amount to cover all the work that we do. And I appreciated the House passing that, and I hope that the Senate comes through too. So again, we need to have the freedom, I can't say we now, because I'm not a part of the commission, but the commission needs to have the freedom, to have that money right there in their own commission account within a bank, so they can, boom, get consultant, review this. We did contact through the Chair, hearing officer, consultants, we had those people lined up, but they all asked about payment, and we were stuck for an answer, saying, well, sort of embarrassing to tell them that we had zero money, and, you know, that sort of would put a damper on their pursuing the, you know, helping the commission. So it's, right now, it's a, it's in this critical time of when things come together. And right now, with the Senate holding the HB Bill 97, I hope they overcome that obstacle, and it's passed, and then the governor would approve it. And then there is money coming in, according to the chairman, but it will be sent up to the Department of Finance, currently, according to the law. So it would still be sort of like, excuse me, handcuffed on the fact of not having that money readily available for spending for these critical, critical items.
Thank you, Dr. Jack, for that explanation. I just wanted to ask that, because, and thank you for providing that. I just wanted to ask that, because we do have here as representatives of the Third Senatorial District, many constituents coming up, coming to us, asking, why is the FAC so high? When is CPUC going to step in? But that's a very good explanation, and this is for the public to hear that.
Of course, I, I'm approached myself in the market, and, and I, you know, last couple of months, I could have really said, I'm not a commissioner, you know, I've been renominated, but I still gave them an answer, and prefaced it by saying, I'm not a commissioner, but prior to that, we were taking action as far as we could, and we empathize and sympathize with the public. And we also understand the CUC's position and DOCOMO and ITNE, and, but we want to take action, and positive action. And the Chairman has been very good at being strong in this matter. CUC at one point came back with an opinion that they didn't have to pay an assessment. And, you know, I was still a commissioner at the time, and I said, Chairman, and he goes, I've already sent them back a letter, and they finally paid some of their assessment, as far as I know. And, but, you know, having us go through this is sometimes frustrating, and, and it's not, for me, when the people ask me about, what about the rates? What is CPUC doing? I take it personally, as a citizen and also a commissioner, that we do need to do something. And I want to do something with the other commissioners. And, and we all know this island's small, and we all help each other. The help that we can extend right now is being stifled. And I'm not going to point any fingers, it's just the way it is. And we just want to have some breathing room to take action, to help the people, the Commonwealth, get a fair shake on this matter, and also have the entities also have a reasonable, fair amount to operate their systems.
Thank you, Dr. Jack. And thank you, Madam Chair, are you?
Thank you, Dr. Jack. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming in, Dr. Jack. I was just looking through your resume, and I really wanted to thank you for your service to the CNMI. A lot of these experiences are very commendable, especially the part about being the Director of Vocational and Apprenticeship at the Northern Marianas College. A lot of the people that, some of the linemen that are now servicing, serving our community came from this program. Saipan Cable TV, I, you know, grew up watching the news from Saipan Cable TV. But just your experience here just demonstrates how well-rounded and outside of the box some of the concepts that probably would come out of your leadership. So first of all, thank you. I am a product of the public school system, so thank you for your service, especially during those times. But most especially, once appointed to this position, and I really hope that, that it goes through, because we need, we need a working PUC committee with everything that's going on. I was able to be a part of the Blue Planet Alliance Fellowship in Hawaii, and, and I saw how important the work of the Public Utilities Commission can be in transforming utility systems, including communications, but most especially the energy aspect of it. It's, it's a lot better to have a dedicated commission functioning, fully funded, so that way, we can demonstrate to the people what can be. And oftentimes, when we are unaware of the opportunities that are out there, the services, the technology, we fear change. And that's the work, I think, that the commission can, can help bridge the gap. So I know you're not in the position right now to submit the budget request, but once, and hopefully, I pray that, that you are appointed, please also consider hiring some data personnel, an IT person, that, that can provide the commission with the data. Because oftentimes, it's easy to speak of issues and opportunities, but once the agencies are able to demonstrate what can be, it's, it's really gonna, gonna help. But also, I, the work that the commission, especially now, is really vital. We can't have agencies like CUC running without regulations. And even for other departments, when we look at the issues with, with fires and law enforcement, I see right here, your work with accreditation, and that, that says a lot. When you have an accredited organization, you are running under standards and your best practices, so. I, and your references also say a lot. These people on your resume, they don't, they don't BS. So I look forward to, and I, and again, I pray that, that everyone really looks into this experience, because it does say a lot on how qualified you are for this post. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Representative. If I could add, my dedication to the operations of CUC in a fair manner, I don't know if anybody remembers, but circa 2008 or '09, Honorable Stanley Torres and myself, we sued CUC for establishing rates without any permission, oversight, public hearings. And we were somewhat criticized for that, you know, because, God bless him, Stan Torres is a rebel, but a good rebel, and I've been known to be a little bit of a maverick, so, but we pursued it, because it was just basically unfair, because we went through the data, and we prevailed, Supreme Court ordered in our favor, and ordered that we be paid back X amount of dollars. And good Congressman Stan said he got paid back. I haven't been paid back yet, and I've sent a few letters, but, you know, it's only been 15 years, I think they're still looking at the figures maybe, but, you know, it just baffles me. And as a commissioner, I feel if, at the time last year, if I should bring it up, but I didn't want to, I think on their own, you know, take care of business. I mean, there's a Supreme Court order, you know, you owe me some money. But anyway, that's another, the fact that I do go after, I like solutions. Even on Saipan, when I came here, I had no car, no clothes, a pair of jeans and t-shirt, had no job. I thought there was a US minimum wage here, you know, like, was like four bucks then at the time. And I finally secured a job at Mount Carmel, a good old sister Bernie, who looked at me and said she didn't trust Americans. And I looked at her and I said, I'm not too sure I'm going to trust you if you don't trust me. And we laughed, and we broke the ice, and she hired me and said, I can give you the top amount, because you do have a degree, you know, I had a college degree. That's what I brought with me, my bags, I worked with my dad, I had construction bags and a diploma stuck in it. So I gave you the top pay, and I go, oh, appreciate that, Sister Bernie. 55 cents an hour, you know, 20 hours a week, so, what did I make, about 10 bucks a week? But I was happy. I lived on the beach for my first week or so, outside of the old Royal Taga, and a local kid in there gave me a room in the Oa Annex on the side, and said, pay me when you can, and it was approved by the management. So I enjoyed this paradise, and it was working, you know, it's finding solutions. I got a place to stay, I got a job, and the students even donated and got me, I only had one shirt, and when I washed it, at the time, the bleach in the water was so strong that it was, turned all white, so, they got me a new Hawaiian shirt, and I felt, hey, this is great. And so from that early beginning, I always wanted, you know, solutions. I picked up trash on the beach every day, that was my home in a way, I lived there on the beach. And some congressmen saw me from the old building, and later on, when I was recommended to, God bless him, Governor Tenno, I did get hired by him, and part of it is because they saw that I liked helping the island, making, fixing things, and whatever I can do, I like doing, so I appreciate. And one sore spot, you mentioned about fires, that fire over there in Susupi at the car shop, I lost two cars, my wife's and mine. And, you know, it's, the poor owner is crying, I said, don't worry about it, you guys didn't get hurt, mainly, the wife had a heart attack, and you're safe, and I'll work it out somehow. And, but, yeah, it was quite a night, and morning, when I saw my two cars in ashes, so, these things happen, but I'm already getting solutions. I called my wife, I said, you can't blame me, and she said, what we're going to do? And I said, I got a little money, get a down payment, we'll get you a car. And I got another car used that I have, so, life goes on, let's make improvements and keep moving. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Jack. The floor is still open, members, for any other comments? I'd just like to make a comment before- I'd just like to make a comment before we go on recess. But, Dr. Jack, it's nice to see you back here on your renomination by the administration. I think every member here, including the public, has a sense of urgency to get this done. One of the things that we all can agree on as community members is that for a very long time, we've been held hostage due to the lack of regulations, due to the lack of due diligence, due to the lack of proper planning, due to the lack of open communication, due to the lack of, right? And there comes a time where you run out of ransom. Because now it's just survival, right? How much longer can we survive? This body, I can tell you, we are trying to find solutions. We are committed to solutions because we want our community and our Commonwealth to thrive. Survival days are, we hope will be a thing of the past. But in efforts to work together so that we can thrive as a community, thrive as a Commonwealth, I think, I know we're all on the same page. So, sir, thank you once again for accepting the renomination. I thank the members for being active and having an open communication with you. Is there anything else you'd like to say before I call a recess? Oh, I'm sorry, Uncle Roman, you need to raise your hand higher. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Beneventi.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Mr. Angelo, Jack.
Good morning, Uncle Roman.
I know we've walked the same track in the past and even until now. But I'd just like to congratulate you for being appointed by the governor.
Thank you.
The governor has really made a good decision with regards to your appointment. And I'd just like to keep it simple, you know. Right now, I'm still, at my age, I'm still here in the legislature. And I'm still seeing a lot of issue, a lot of challenges ahead of us, really, since a couple of years ago until now. And we still haven't solved a lot of the issues. Yes. So maybe by your effort, one, one way or another, you know, with Mr. Syroh that is behind you, I think we could make things a lot easier. Not for me, or for all of us here, but for, at least for the future generation that's to come. And that's it. I'm so proud that they got you in. And I support you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairwoman.
Thank you, Representative. I do admire your work here and the fact that we, my uncles, we stick together and we still got juice. And so, we'll get it done. We'll get it done if we just have the opportunity. And I also agree with the Madam Chair on her poignant statements about the current situation of the CNMI. I do want to retain the island life and the style, but we have to be moving it forward in a more modern manner of management and taking care of business. Certain things can't be put off, you know, gupa, or even, one of my favorite words I learned from a Rotinese friend of mine, ocupaña, which means the day after, day after, day after tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jack. At this time, I'd like to call a short recess. All members, before we, you know, one moment, we're still at recess. Dr. Jack, thank you once again. You don't have to stay if you choose not to. I know that you probably have things on your agenda, like probably filling out some insurance claims. Trying to find out maybe if there's some water at the fire hydrant right across the, in Precinct Two, I'm not sure.
Accepting, you know, the fact, and we'll take care of it. The main thing, Madam Chair, I appreciate your having this meeting. And it was, to me, it was a good time, time spent. And if I'm excused, like you say, I, I am going over to the shop to pick up some ashes because I was going to trade the car in. So I'm going to give Ben Lozama at Triple J a jar full of ashes for a trade-in, see what I can get. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Jack. And good luck on filing all your insurance claims. We wish you gentlemen a good day. Thank you so much. Members, we have dismissed Dr. Jack. We are now back in session. I did say that we were back from recess. And I must commend Dr. Jack for his comments. Although he's suffering from two lost cars, he still has some positivity and some positive remarks despite that. At this time, I'd like to recognize Manny Castro, Representative Manny Castro.
Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to have this joint committee prepare a standing committee report recommending the confirmation of Dr. Jack Angelo to the Public Utilities Commission.
There has been a motion on the table to approve the nomination of Dr. Jack Angelo. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? I apologize once again for the record. There has been a motion on the table to accept the nomination of Dr. Jack Angelo to sit on the PUC Commission. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Cam, can you please prepare the committee report so that we're ready for the next House session? Moving right along in our agenda, we are now at miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous items the members would like to discuss? Recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Since we're on the discussion of fires, and it happens to be in Precinct Two, I just wanted to, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but I wanted to stress the importance of accreditation and getting our departments accredited. Right now, I know there are firefighters, there's a lot of issues that they're going through in terms of funding, shift changes. I actually intend to meet with the commissioner later on today. And, but, again, like I said earlier, sometimes we, we fear change. But when the data and the information is there, we, we need to look at the best possible solution. So condolences to the cars in Precinct Two. But I think we need to look at this situation and ensure that we take proactive measures, whether it be a DPW situation where we install sprinklers in, you know, a lot of areas where there's forest fires, or making sure that we have proper maintenance for our fire engines, and proper training and support for our firemen. And I firmly believe that, how many years we've been going through similar changes, no matter what administration, but until we look at accreditation and setting standards and being up to par with best practices in the industry, we're going to continue to have these challenges. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Anyone else on miscellaneous that would like to make a comment? Moving along, I'd like to recognize the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Motion for adjournment.
There's been a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presence today. This meeting is now adjourned.